Hey, what's up, folks? Check it out. Today, we got a very special guest. As you know, I'm interviewing candidates from all over the city about the upcoming races, and I have actually, this guy's been waiting for a while. I'll let him introduce himself, though. Go ahead.
Morning, everybody. My name is Luke Florzak. I'm running for New York City Council in District Four, which is, to put it simply, a lot of the Upper East Side of Manhattan. There's some cutouts here and there that go to different districts, but for the most side, for the most part, it's the Upper East Side. I am a former Marine. If you can tell behind my shoulder is a USMC flag, those that joined would, everybody has one. My first kind of experience into running for office is this race, and so far, it's been an incredible experience. It's been a wonderful kind of just wealth of knowledge thrown at you over every kind of aspect that you can think of, whether it be, you know, talking to people on the streets, seeing what the average American, the average New Yorker deals with on a daily basis, what is most important to them, whether it's getting in depth into policies and how New York State runs its elections, you know, what's the process for becoming a candidate?
Yeah, it's a time where you really learn about a lot of different new issues that are going on and get like, you know, introduced to a new process. So yeah, I'm sure it's a pretty exciting time. Now, go ahead.
No, I was, I was just gonna say it's for somebody who's never thought about running before, it can be a lot, but it's, it's incredible. If, if I knew already beforehand that most people don't like the idea of politics, I would suggest everyone should run at some point for something, just to see what the process is like. You know, we're, we're all granted the right to vote, but I think we should also be granted, well, in, in a similar way, we're also granted the right to run.
Yeah, I actually agree with that, you know, at a very deep level, there's a lot of people wanna, you know, they think they go out and protest is the only way to accomplish change, or that's all they really know or understand. It's not really correct at all. But you know, everybody's gotta start somewhere. So, and you know, you're learning about so many things right now, right? You from city of yes, right, to homeless to the Robert Brooks situation, there's so many different issues that you're asked to comment on, you can't know everything, but it's a great way to learn about stuff real quick. So.
To that extent, too, what's interesting is oftentimes, a lot of the questions that you're asked don't necessarily have to deal with everything that's in your parameters to, to fix. For example, if, if we have time for it, I have a little anecdote on that. Several months ago, I went to a CB eight meeting where they were going over certain land use items that, you know, they, they had on their agenda. One of which was they were discussing the design of the windows for a building that was facing Park Avenue. The complaint was the design of the windows facing south, so on, on the numbered street were different, just they looked different than the windows facing Park Avenue. And the community board wanted to write a resolution for the designer, the architect of the building to change the design so that, you know, one side or the other, all of the windows looks the same. Well, the, the silly, personally, I think it was kind of silly thing about this is this building has been built for 80 years. You know, the architect has been dead, you know, it, it was first put it up in the 50s. So not only would it be extremely costly to change and alter a building that's been there for decades, but you know, the people facing Park Avenue, if their windows are shrunk, they're gonna be pissed off. And if you increase the window size of those facing south, their property value is gonna go up and they're gonna be forced to pay more. And so, you know, I, I was, I was quiet for most of the presentation and towards the end of the event, I was at, well, the, the board you know, opened the room for questions and somebody somewhere pointed out that as a candidate that I was sitting down or in the room, and they asked me what my opinion was on that matter. And in the same breath, asked, and what are my, uh, what's my opinion on how I would fix the Israel Gaza situation? So, uh, you know, two completely different issues. And, you know, I, all I could say for the foreign policy issue was, you know, that's not in my repertoire of things that I can have any sort of influence over, but what I do have influence over is public safety. Yeah, at the time, this, at the, of the CB eight meeting, there was a lot of protests, a lot of violence happening. And, uh, you know, public safety is key, you know, everybody wants to feel safe, everybody deserves to feel safe. And that's something that I can have some sort of effect on. And that's, that was my, my opinion for foreign policy.
Interesting. I actually, that, that's actually quite interesting for myself on a variety of reasons, but we're gonna actually, uh, this is actually the online, uh, you know, interview with the candidate. So I do pretty much keep the questions the same. We'll, we'll probably return to that, uh, aspect possibly, but I do really appreciate your answer with that, right? Um, a lot of people, you're absolutely right. A lot of people don't just see government as all the same. City Council, right? We know that the federal government takes care of the military, takes care of the postal stuff, right? Yeah. The local government, there's the NYPD, right? That's New York City. CUNY is New York City, right?
Right.
That's debatable, some things that take one state, but you know.
Yeah. Money from, absolutely.
Interesting. And, okay, and just one question before I go on, right? Yeah. Yes. What was your, what was your decision about the windows?
Uh, well, exactly what I said. Um, I didn't really have a decision because one way or the other, you're gonna have to have the people of the building pay out to redesign it. And one side of the, you know, one side of the building's residents are going to be mad, one way or the other. The Park Avenue people are gonna have smaller windows if they take the design of the south facing window. The people facing south are gonna have to pay more in property value if they take the larger, you know, Park Avenue styled windows now that their view is much larger.
So, okay, all right, just interesting. All right.
So I, I, if I had had a vote, I would have voted for just leave the building the way that is.
Okay, that makes sense. Just thanks for answering that. Okay. And as we know that the, um, just like you mentioned, when you run for office, you become aware or, you know, are asked to become, develop a certain level of expertise on many, many issues. But when you first started in politics, maybe it was the military thing, it was something different. What's the first thing that kind of got you involved with politics in the first place?
So my background is actually in music. I have played piano since I was four years old. My first degree, I studied music composition at a music conservatory on the West Coast. You know, when I was 11, 12 years old, I knew I wanted to write music for the movies. And that was gonna be my path moving forward. It wasn't until my last year at college at University of the Pacific that while I knew that I was gonna need a full-time job after college and you know, there aren't a lot of openings for film composers. And at the time ISIS was getting big. And I remember early in my final semester, seeing them burn a prisoner of war in a cage. Uh, and thinking if I had something to do about that, that I should, that I, I just felt more morally obligated to do something about it. So I ended up joining the Marine Corps. And actually, it was just before boot camp. Maybe a couple of days before I shipped off. I, I had originally listed in the infantry. It was a choice. I wanted to do that. One of my recruiters actually looked at my college transcript and, you know, was flipping through all the classes. And he says, hey, Florzak, why do you have so many music classes on your college transcript? And I go, well, because I just went to a music conservatory. He goes, oh, well, we're gonna have a, uh, we're gonna have you do a, a, um, an audition. And we're gonna see if you're gonna be placed in the band. And I didn't really have a choice about it. They found a piano somewhere. I played. I passed. And, uh, it wasn't really a choice. They're like, yeah, you're gonna be a piano player in the brand, in the Marine Band, which I didn't even know that that was a thing that you could do. You know, I, I knew if I'd played trumpet or clarinet or something, that, that would have been an option. I didn't know you could play piano. Also, had I known beforehand, I still would have wanted to be in the infantry. So at the start of my enlistment, I was a little reluctant to being in the band. But coming out of it, it was a remarkable experience in that I got a chance to represent something much larger than myself. I had the opportunity to basically travel across the country. I was stationed in San Diego. We got to do gigs in Tennessee, Detroit, certain places across the Midwest. You know, we, we did a whole week doing Iowa, Illinois, Indiana, just driving, which was incredible. We got to do a couple of NFL halftime shows. So being the piano player or the keyboard player, I was attached to the, the rock band. So we had the fun gigs. But I knew I didn't want it to be a career. So when I got out was when I really, uh, it really hit me that I had had such a wonderful opportunity doing that. You know, being able to represent something much larger than yourself and something that, you know, you, you wanna hold with great honor and, and you know, carry on that legacy as best you can. And I I really wanted to figure out how to bring that aspect into a civilian job. And essentially, what I came to discover was I loved traveling. I loved learning about different cultures. I I, and I came to the conclusion that I should go back to school for foreign politics and, you know, either work for the state, State Department or work at the UN. And so that led me to using the GI Bill and going to school in New York. Originally with the intent of working for the government, you know, for the State Department. And that was before the pandemic. The pandemic hits and I really got a sense of the issues that were right outside my front door. You know, I, I knew, you know, I wasn't blind. I knew that there were issues at here at home. But my love was called, you know, different cultures, traveling, you know, being abroad. And I wanted to use my aspects or my unique experiences, my unique background to help in that sense. So I figured, you know, I could leave the domestic issues for somebody else. But the pandemic really changed my mind in that if I was gonna be around politics or in politics, that I really have to start with what's out my front door. And so that led me to, you know, joining a local Democratic Club, seeing what the local side of politics is. I helped the current District Four City Councilman run for reelection a couple of years ago. And that sort of got me in the door of local politics. I, I was still under the impression that I, you know, I would have been fine being a staffer, being, you know, legislative affairs, you know, someone within the office. It wasn't until earlier last year, around this time, actually, 2024, that I went to a budget meeting at the City Council for, in the the Committee on Veterans and Veteran Services. The committee in the City Council was holding a budget hearing for the year. And I was invited to go and listen. And there were a few things that stood out to me as odd during that meeting. One of which was, you know, one of my, the friend of mine who invited me pointed out, not a single veteran was on that committee. And furthermore, you know, after researching it, there's not a single veteran in the City Council out of any of the 51 districts that make up all of New York City. And, you know, there's no hard number of how many veterans there are in New York City, chiefly because of issues that we can get into. But largely, it's self-identifying. You know, if you don't say that you're a veteran, then the city and those that can help and provide benefits don't know. So the current hard count is 200,020 about, or 20, you know, close to that. The Commissioner of DVS and others think that number is much closer to 250,000. So a quarter of a million veterans live in New York City without a single shared voice representing them in local government. And when this was pointed out to me, you know, I had just finished helping Keith Powers with his reelection. One of the veterans pointed out, why don't you run? Uh, and I'd never really considered running myself. I sort of think it's one of those things where if you're the one that thinks you should run, then you shouldn't. But if somebody else believes in you and thinks that, hey, you know, we would want you to represent us, then that should, personally, I think that should be the only criteria for a person deciding to run in the first place. And it started from there, you know, figuring out what my platform was, what, why I wanted to run. You know, what makes me different? Uh, and it's all of those things, you know, having a background in the arts. At the time, I was the only veteran candidate running. Now, I, I believe there's one or two in a, um, a district in Queens, and I know that there's a veteran running for mayor. So I can
Which, which, uh, which, which candidate is that? Do you is running for mayor? If that's a veteran?
Uh, you interviewed him.
That's right. Gonzalo Duran, right? There's also another potential one named Darren Aquino, I think, who has some military background, as well as Javon Ross. So I didn't know, maybe you knew one in particular, or maybe like, you know, all of them. I don't know, right?
No, we, we don't have a group chat. But at least in Manhattan, I'm the only veteran candidate running.
You know, Gonzalo does have his show Vet Talk. Maybe we could get you in for an interview there. That's good to know. Okay. So there are some other with military background, just so you know, not, not just. But he's, because he has a nonprofit called Vet Vet Talk or, uh, was it Devil Dog, something, uh? You know, that's actually, um, he's a little bit more established with the veteran, right, assistance. So that's, yeah, that's good. Okay. Thank you so much. So. All right. Um, by the way, you gave a great answer. That it was a little bit more in-depth than usual, but you stayed to the topic, which was the question was, how did you get started in politics and really helped us to understand, right, your development? Right? As terms of its relation to the candidacy. So I really appreciate that answer.
I will, I will point out too, during the pandemic, you know, when everybody was locked in their rooms, essentially, instead of making sourdough, sourdough, I discovered that I loved writing stories. And actually become a, a published author since then.
Congratulations.
Uh, thank you. So perhaps one of the reasons why I can tell stories is because I just enjoy being a storyteller.
Cool. Okay. That's an important, uh, you know, skill for someone who's in office to be able to communicate to the constituents what's going on. You're gonna have to do a lot of communicating. So that's good. Okay. The next question is, uh, do you have a certain political ideology? We know that they have, you know, DSA, some people say they're socialists.
Not really. I would, I mean, I'm, I'm, as I'm running on the demo, I'm running on the Democratic ticket. But I would say I'm more purple than anything, and I think that's the best way to describe it. Certainly more blue these days than red. But I, I think it's important to be the person that's willing to debate and discuss and talk to the people on the other side. And that's the only thing, that's the only way to get things done.
Okay. So I'm gonna just throw out a couple of terms right here. Um, so when people sometimes talk about, uh, you know, not that you shouldn't necessarily limit your late self to a label, and I do definitely agree with that mentality, but some people might say centrist, if you say like, you know, or a moderate or something like that, right?
Definitely a moderate Democrat.
Getting towards that. Okay, more, all right.
If you're gonna put a label on it, a moderate Democrat. There are certain things about the Democratic Party that I'm not thrilled with these days. There are things about the Republican Party I'm not thrilled with these days. I know a lot of Democrats miss the, the Bush or Ronald Reagan Republicans, probably just as much as Republicans miss the days of Kennedy as Democrats. But you know, part of the issue of looking backward is not looking forward, not putting in the effort to actually talk across the aisle or making making an effort to
Partisanship, you mean, like, kind of like party politics?
You know, it, yeah, I, I've, I've heard plenty of anecdotes from other elected officials over the course of the campaign that have alluded to the idea that there's a difference between when the camera is on and when the camera is off. And that's gotta stop. You know, and, and for, for both sides, you know, be your person, you know, be an honorable human being. If you wanna get into politics and you wanna get into governing, that's fine. Be genuine. You know, that's, that's probably the, one of the reasons, if not the biggest reason, why people have stopped trusting in government. Which is another reason why I've wanted to, to run is I, I hate that. I, you know, I'm a normal person, I think, if that comes across.
I appreciate that a lot. I think our society really needs that right now. Um, and unfortunately, I think that allows us to somewhat to blame on society, right? Unfortunately, people like fake stuff. They like fake food. They like fake boobs. They like fake almost everything. Um, and that's, you know, for people who are not really informed buyers, they are right.
Yeah. And that's, that's the other thing that I wanna kind of run on is transparency, but also lifting up the public's awareness and education on the world. You know, you know, whenever you're, you know, you're doom scrolling on Instagram or whatever. And you, you know, how many times have you come across some sort of clip where somebody's asked, can you name a country in Europe?
Oh, yeah, it's a little horrible. Yeah.
Right. Or, you know, I'm, I'm sure you've seen, I, I forget what his, uh, channel is called, but the guy who interviews people in Times Square, where no, no matter what their answer is, he says yes.
Okay, I haven't seen that.
It's remarkable. You know, he'll go, what's two plus three? And, you know, somebody will, you know, pause and is it six? Yeah, yes. And of course, it's clipped together. So I, I know not every single person he's talking to is giving out wrong answers, but the number of episodes that he has is overwhelming. So the amount of content that he's able to produce because people are giving wrong answers, probably because they don't know, is that, that's the government's fault. That's that's our fault for not putting in the effort. You know, to not making the future generations care about, you know, can I name a country in Europe? You know, one of my favorite, you know, he's a interesting person historically, and I know there's, you know, good sides and bad sides of him, but one of my favorite quotes of Napoleon is, you know, show me the, a map of a country and I can tell you it's foreign policy.
Interesting. That's interesting call right there. Go ahead.
Which, you know, it's, it's right, like, if, if I can, if, if I can see the map of a world, of the world, and I can see where a country lies on it, to have the understanding, I can tell you it's foreign policy is directly important to the United States. And, you know, the, the person in, I don't know, Des Moines, Iowa, why do they care where Italy is? Well, they might not directly, but I'm sure in certain circumstances because of foreign policy through the United States and, and the relationship with all of the, the countries that border the Mediterranean, it does become important. You know, why is Israel Gaza so important, that, that issue? Because it affects Spain, because it affects Morocco and all of the one, you know, the countries that border the Mediterranean. Throughout history, the Mediterranean has been vital for various reasons. And, you know, knowing that and knowing, you know, going into something else, knowing why tariffs are generally speaking, not a good economic weapon, especially in a globalized economy.
Okay, I'm trying to, just, uh, just trying to make the tie here, right? And I do actually see that before you made a great, that you had a great ability to actually tie the things together. So I am sure that there's an overall bent to this. But just to make clear for my audience right now, we started with the idea of talking about, right? What is the political ideology? We started to talk about, right? You started to talk about, one thing that kind of made me pause for a second, you said Gazan, uh, you know, is affecting Spain, right, which is important, right? But really, they have their own internal issue going on. Um, now we're talking about tariffs and stuff like that. So really to understand, um, I guess somehow you had started with Italy and if you're trying to tie it together with this Mediterranean thing.
I was listing out a, a random country in Europe.
Okay, uh, maybe to bring it more, once again, running on the Upper East Side. We know the Upper East Side, you know, maintains certain critical location points between downtown, right, the Bronx. Also, the transportation hub is gonna be traveling maybe through some of those areas, right, the congestion pricing zone, things like that. So what are your, um, how does?
I was gonna be getting there. I was gonna be getting there.
Oh, okay, my bad. I'm so sorry. Okay, go ahead. Yeah.
No, you're good. It's my fault for uh.
No, it's not your fault. You're doing a great job, actually. Yeah. I enjoyed this interview, tell you the truth. Go ahead.
I appreciate it. No, um, yeah, and a more localized. Example, District Four. Basically is uh, you know. The four, five, six line. So, you know. When it comes to congestion pricing. You know, interestingly, I don't have a strong opinion whether it should exist one way or the other. You know, I I have to. Be- because I wasn't a part of, you know, any planning for it or or had any input one way or the other. I have to assume that the reasons for it existing are genuine and honest and that, you know, the revenue coming in will help. You know, green light the completion of the Second Avenue Line, uh, the subway line. I'm certainly gonna. Push for that to happen, uh, if I do end up in office. But that those, you know.
Just to be clear, what you're pushing for is a Second Avenue Line or congestion pricing or both?
To complete the Second Avenue Line going up into Harlem, the 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 plan that had been put in place.
Just want, okay, just wanna make it clear on that. Okay.
But, you know, if congestion pricing remains afterward. You know, that's, you know, in the ballpark of twelve billion dollars that can be spent on, you know, public education, can be spent on capital. Programs throughout the city, you know, uh, all sorts of various things. I understand the. Duality, I guess, of, you know, people south of Sixtieth Street. Being for it and people above Sixtieth Street being adamantly against it. I think there should have been a much longer and more in-depth conversation on. Who around that area is to receive exemptions? I I never heard any talk on that at all, and I think that was that that's my main. Uh, gripe with how everything transpired. Which I I I, you know, I think anybody who's li- who lives around that area. Uh, that was their main gripe too, you know, like I I'm sure people that live on Sixty First Street. If they got an exemption for it would be fine with, you know, people from Upper New York, you know, anytime they have to drive in. Paying the fee, but because they're now included because, you know, of an arbitrary line cut across Manhattan. Uh, they're now in the, you know, the you you pay zone. Uh, just little things like that, and i- it's actually really. That congestion pricing is is an interesting issue, being a candidate whose district borders it on both sides. You know, half of the constituents of District Four live below it and are. Uh, you know, cheering that its existence happened. And half of the constituents live above it and can't understand why the other half like it. So, you know, being being somebody that wants to represent the district, it's it's very uh. Tricky having a a position one way or the other, and I, you know. I don't like. Increasing taxes.
Right.
But at the same time. I I I go back to the fact that I didn't have any input.
Yeah, and you know, uh, I really like what you said earlier, um, you know. You you wanna believe the best in people. You think that the project started on good terms, which is possible. Anything is possible could have started for bad terms, but you know, we wanna believe the best in people. But because there's so much money involved, right? There will be certain parties that say, you know, I stand to benefit off of this, or I wanna change it in this way. So we know that New York City is the largest, you know, uh, city in New in the United States. And we'll have a certain level of complexity and money that is involved, so we'll talk more about, um. You know, about the players of the policy a little la- later, but this is good. We're really getting to know the first half, getting to know yourself as a candidate. So understand how you make decisions, right, is actually quite um, good for us to know. Uh, another question that I have is, uh, well, we'll probably come back to the condition pricing later on, but. When we have, before we talk about your political ideology, right, and I I really liked your answer, I thought was mature. I feel that people are too caught up with one side or a label, right? Um, can be closed minded or not really.
They're gonna be the death of us.
Appreciate that, yeah. Uh, so, but another thing that people may, um. Besides that, or something that can help differentiate themselves, like they say, I'm a Democrat, right? You made a uh, difference between JFK. Some people might say that I'm a, you know, um, a Roosevelt or FDR Democrat. They believe in New Deal. That's a very popular one. Um, so is there someone who's influenced your own political ide- uh ideology or has been influenced, maybe if not politically, then maybe leadership, like we know that, uh. What's his name? The guy who is uh Jack Welsh, who's running GE, right? You're also doing some management. So who's influential to your leadership style?
Leadership style, um. That's an interesting question. For for somebody who has been in the military. I'd say, and and specifically the Marine Corps, where the Marine Corps is one of the, the only if if if. Perhaps if only, but um, at least one of the few branches that really push. Leadership down to the lowest rank. And that's evident in. Anytime that a a service member from the Marine Corps uh transitions to another branch. Uh, they are given the rank one above the one that they had been in the Marine Corps. For example, if somebody was a an E five or a sergeant in the Marine Corps and they transitioned to be in the Air Force. Uh, when they get through all of their training in the Air Force, they're uh promoted to E six. And the re- uh, that's the case across the the military. The reason behind that is essentially the job of an E five in the Marine Corps is the same as. The job of an E six and any other branch, and that goes down to the 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 lowest ranks too. So the job of an E three. In the Marines is the same uh responsibility as the job of an E four in any other branch. And so my leadership style. Being in that environment where the lowest rank is given responsibility above. Those of of a peer from another branch. Is actually one of my platoon sergeants. You know, he. Uh, if I said his name. It 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 would not mean anything. He's a staff sergeant, well, I think he's a gunnerie sergeant now in the Marine Corps. When I knew him, he was a staff sergeant, just a wonderful human being. Cared about the people under him that he represented, that he spoke for. Stern yet fair, always willing to give the benefit of the doubt and opportunities to those that seek it. You know, if you didn't. Try to go above and beyond, that didn't affect how he saw you. But he wouldn't, you know, necessarily go out of his way to give you that opportunity if it presented itself. Just because he haven't shown to be the kind of person that wanted it. And I think in that sort of sense, you know, the idea of putting in the effort and going the extra mile really. Has stuck with me. But in terms of. Like quality of character for somebody potentially being in office. I would go back and say. Probably the the person that inspires me the most is Abraham Lincoln. Uh, which might be a. Cheesy or a stereotypical answer. But, you know, the. The kind of fortitude that is required to. You know, tying it back to putting in the the effort, you know. To be able to hold, you know, know that it's right to hold the country together. To not. Back down or give in to something that you know is morally wrong. That's incredible. You know, everything that he had to face as a as a one-term president. Uh, is remarkable. You know, obviously, he has his critics for certain. Policies. But just as a human being. Yeah, a wonderful human being. I don't, I don't think there's, you know, you can have better.
Something to tie that into the beginning half of your answer, right? Um, one of the things that the qualities, the reason why I asked about this to really understand which qualities, right, which you did tie it into. One of the things that you really talked about, like i- is like enthusiasm and authentic desire to actually make a difference in the position. Uh, you know, you can't buy loyalty, integrity, or, you know, um, passion for a particular topic, so I do appreciate that answer. Um, Abraham Lincoln, you start to go, um, would you say that he somehow expressed, uh, do you have an example of how expressed like some kind of? Particular enthusiasm for his job or is that is that what the tie was or?
Not necessarily enthusiasm for the job, but more just, you know, there was the option early on when. Uh, the states were seceding to just allow it to happen. To kind of just roll over, you know, there were. Plenty of people within the White House, within um Congress that were. You know, apathetic about it. You know, wh- why? You know, if they wanna be a different country, why not?
That makes sense. Okay, that's a good answer. Yeah. And let's move on to the next, um, let's move on to the next one. Yeah, uh, we're almost done with the uh. This is probably the last question is in terms of the learning about yourself as a candidate. The next question is, um, there's a wide range of people that are running for office. We got people that are like a former, the 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 mayor, incumbent mayor, Adams is running again. We've got people have no political experience whatsoever. But, you know, they they may have other accomplishments in business or things like that, right, in a management that may be relevant. What are the um accomplishments that you're most proud of that are relevant towards, you know, running for city council? Like maybe you try to get some legislation passed, maybe you uh stood up for a certain issue, maybe you've managed, right, um, certain, right, uh, business or something that has. Relevant towards managing government. What are constantly most proud of?
So in terms of. Legisla- you know, being part of legislation, I don't really have. Uh, any experience in that, just because I'm sort of still fairly new to the arena.
Okay.
There, however. I would say a couple of my. The things that I'm proud of that I can take with me potentially into office. One is having uh written and published a book, a novel. And. Writing music for the Marine Corps Band. Um, and having it be performed. And the reason that I mention those things is District Four specifically. Has some of the. The pinnacle institutions in the artistic world. Carnegie Hall, the Met, the Frick, the Guggenheim, uh, MoMA. You know, just to name a a handful. These are places that the person who represents this district has to have, I I believe must have. A. Deep understanding of what the arts can do to a society and to a community above. Just being art or just it being music. You know, what do the arts do? In public education? What do the arts do in building community? Somebody that represents this district and all of the important institutions of the arts. Perhaps in the world, but certainly in America are here. And that's an opportunity that. Is missed by anybody else running for this district who doesn't understand what that can do. Now, I can go into further what uh examples I mean by that, but. It it really is one of those things where, you know, the opportunity is right there to build a strong community. Uh, and it's not a a strong community of the up up Upper East Siders. It's a strong community of New Yorkers. Uh, and my intention for that is to build it out. Through all of New York City, if not the state, if I can. But using the arts sort of as that's that spearhead for. The value and. Importance of uh public education and the arts.
Okay, I have to admit that, um, you know, overall, I did really like your answers like more than most candidates, to tell you the truth, when you talk about like. The congestion pricing and understanding your district and understanding, right, the 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 borders of it, right, and how that whole thing um affects. Right, your your approach here, but I have to admit that this particular answer right here, as in terms of getting the book published. I'm a little bit lost right here as to how, um, I do see the relationship of yourself as an artist and understanding that whole process. But as in terms of being a compliment that you're most proud of that's relevant towards leading the um, the district, I just wanna really get that a little bit more clear, so. Um, maybe the process of getting the book published itself helps you to understand. Maybe, uh, you know, the process that artists are trying to engage with, is that why this accomplishment is one that you're the most proud of that's relevant towards? Um, leadership and management or, you know.
Yeah, it uh, it highlights. The difficulty that artists go through, you know, to being relevant in their community. You know, there are plenty of nonprofits and uh. Physical places that highlight local art, local music, local literature. But it's mostly overlooked by. Local government. Uh, and in a place like New York City. Which I emphasize again is like the pinnacle of the art world in the the world, certainly in America. Uh, you know, whether that be fashion, whether that be music, whether that be poetry, all of the, you know, a capital A arts.
Interesting, okay.
It, you know, to really be a musician, to really be an author. And know what that process is like of trying to get published, of trying to. You know, make it for yourself, not not make it big, but, you know. Be proud of, to be proud of yourself and to make a living, you know. You know, we hear about the. The popular books or the popular musicals because they have made it. They've already been established. But it takes years and years and a lot of luck to be there.
But but won't some art that is maybe like, uh, that's like non-controversial? Or art that also supports the status quo is more likely to actually receive support? Or, you know, especially maybe institutional support?
You're thinking of art, when I say, you're thinking of when I say art as specifically art. When I'm talking about art. Uh, when I'm talking about art, I'm I'm meaning like capital A, the arts. So everything that's creative.
Well, there's also like, what's defined as art is also sometimes defined by people who have connections to, you know, um, strong government positions. This is art, this not, this art has value, this art doesn't. There's some relationship towards class or as in terms of money. Um, so it's an interesting, you know, cross-section look. Go ahead.
So the arts, capital A arts.
Okay.
Are a chiefly undervalued aspect in public education. Uh, for just one example, those that study music to to any degree will have a better understanding of math skills. And you can take that, you know, into other subjects, you know, the it's actually kind of funny. The nation is just now beginning to understand the value of music therapy. Uh, what's funny about that is in twenty twelve, more than a decade ago, uh, University of the Pacific, my music conservatory, was one of the very first institutes that had a music therapy program. Uh, and so essentially for the last twelve, thirteen years, I've known that music therapy is important and impressive and can do uh, various things that regular or um, traditional therapy can't do. And it's just now becoming commonplace. And that's just in the music world. You know, if we take literature, if we take art and being able to write, express and write out your thoughts. Or, you know, you know, uh, for example, being able to understand uh, you know, in painting, why do colors mix and turn into other colors can help uh, have a better understanding in certain sciences and learning different practical sciences. There was a study done, I was talking to uh, somebody the other day about this and she brought up, I don't know what study um, she was referring to, but there was one done where um, a high school that had dropped its arts programs uh, was given a fund to re-implement them. And across the board, all of the the standardized test scores went up. So it's not just about the practical application of, oh, I, you know, I want to learn music. It's that the availability to do something like that improves public education, i- improves local communities. You know, having a hub to be able to, if you're a local artist, share your local, you you know, the art that you produce, having that outlet for local people can be hard. But, uh, right, but in in, you know, I haven't even said a word whether or not the art is good or not. It's irrelevant whether it's good or not, or what the message is.
Oh, this is, uh, this is so funny for me because I actually am going through this myself. I'm actually, uh, have written, actually Chris Marte, right, actually asking for examination of something called Asian Americans Arts Alliance. Saying that they are actually suppressing my work and putting up, uh, you know, advertising other artists who don't really have my body of work. I'm actually in a spot right now, I'm in art. My office is an art studio and I've actually complained that they've never actually helped me to promote my work versus other artists, right, and they're actually getting government grants right now. So, right, exactly, go ahead.
Right, so
Go ahead, yeah.
So one of my, so, um, about a month ago, I developed a fifteen-point plan. Essentially kind of written as a potential first hundred days. Um, you know, things that I would like to focus on. One of those things is implementing sort of a salon-like uh, place and salon is, uh, as I'm referring to it is like the, uh, um, the Paris Salon, you know, where you could go, a- artists could go and and display you know, things that they've been working on, whether or not they're done or not, but just kind of a an update, that sort of thing. Uh, for all kinds of art, whether it be painting, whether it be sculpture, whether it be literature or music, you know, have a piano or, you know, some somewhere where people can come in and just listen or look or whatever. And have that be bimonthly, you know, have it be, you know, a a set place. Uh, maybe each quarter have it feature a different genre of the arts, you know, maybe like uh, you know, September and October are poetry months or, you know, I'm just spitballing, but that kind of openness to the arts from the position of somebody in a representative office is sorely lacking, and I think something that the city needs.
Cool, I appreciate that. Okay, so now I'm gonna head into the second half, which is asking questions on policy. We're gonna actually bang over the head with a whole bunch of different issues. Um, and I I'm gonna start actually with my, uh, I have a coalition that I work with. I'm gonna start with their issues first. So thank you so much. Uh, the first question is the things that there's actually, uh, public housing, there's a development called Fulton Chelsea. I know that's not directly in your district, but there are some public housing that is. Um, right now, uh, Fulton Chelsea, they're actually trying to demolish those homes, right, public housing is being ended as we know it. Um, and there's other public housing that are in your district that may be slated for demolition or other type of reworking, right, through repairs or but we know that pe- people, uh, when they do this type of demolish the homes, uh, that people could be evicted and and they can't really get in, back in, even though they're promised often to get back in, a lot of times the promises are broken. And that public housing serves the most vulnerable population, sometimes the uh, veterans. Sometimes people that have been elderly, people with disabilities. So, um, would you support a halt to the demolition of Fulton Chelsea Houses?
Definitely.
Okay, I appreciate that, yeah. Um, there's more issues going on there, just so you know, um, the one of the reasons why they're demolishing it versus just repairing those homes is because they're trying to destroy the um, the history of tenancy that the tenant, that the people are living there have, and this is a, this is a trick, so. Thank you so much for supporting, go ahead.
One of my thoughts to that too is that there should be uh, legislation on the books that expressly writes or uh, expressly states that if a project requires removal of tenants, that there be a space provided for each tenant that's removed. So like, you know, i- it, let's say if there's fifteen people in a building, that's gonna be demolished.
Yeah.
The the company, maybe not the 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 company in charge of, or the company actually doing the demolition, but the the company that's behind uh, it doing that needs to find that many uh, open residents nearby, I I probably could be debated on, you know, how far away um, that zone is, but you know, if there's fifteen tenants being displaced, there's gotta be fifteen available uh, places that are being relocated.
You know, there's a lot of complexities about this issue that we could like dive, it's a whole rabbit hole, but I'm not gonna dive down that rabbit hole, um, right, I have actually many coalitional partners that I'm trying to get on board. Um, that, you know, who's it, so I do appreciate your answer there, just, you know, public housing is actually five hundred thousand people in New York City housing.
Yeah.
Um, so that could actually be a potential strong, um, you know, benefit to yourself that from that community, so thanks for being an ally. And just so you know, um, that was amazing information. I didn't know that there was two hundred fifty thousand veterans, that's actually quite a I didn't know they were so populous and very interesting.
Yeah, it's now, of of course, going back to it, I said this at the beginning, there's no way to prove that there's two hundred and fifty thousand.
What you said made sense, though.
Yeah, and a- and it's, it's, it's not just me saying there's two hundred and fifty thousand. W- we have uh, documentation on two hundred and twenty thousand veterans. The assumption is there's approximately thirty thousand more that just haven't declared on any government piece of paper that they're a veteran.
No, I'll be honest with you, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, uh, one of the issues with that is one understandable, that they don't trust government, they don't, or or they don't want to disclose information, which is perfectly fine. The downside is that they're missing out on veteran resources and veteran benefits that being a resident of New York, they may be uh, able to receive. And just because we don't know who they are, uh, they'll never be able to get these benefits. You know, Bob Holden, who's the chair of the Veteran Committee now, he's said before, i- i- I I I'm not sure if he's put it to the floor yet, but he's said before that, um, there should be a property tax reduction for those that are veterans. You know, whatever that percentage is, at the end of the day, I'm sure every veteran that owns a home would enjoy having uh, reduced taxes. But, uh, you know, that only happens if we know that they exist. You know, so, uh, the Commissioner of Department of Veteran Services here in New York City estimates, just based on, you know, his experience, that there's probably about, you know, closer to two fifty.
That's, yeah, that's an interesting, um, topic. There's a lot of different, uh, rabbit holes could ju- jump down, like, uh, like looking at right, how veterans get like certain access to certain programs or things like that. Um, wow. I could even, right, because we know that also, uh, veterans get special preference with street vendorship, things like that, so there's a whole different other rabbit hole we could tie, like to tie down, right? How those things work, once again, the property tax, um, you know, they have served the country, but you know, that could create like secondary ownership positions through, there's a so I'm not gonna jump into all of that, but I do think that, um, you actually opened my mind up, just so you know, to be real with you, public housing, um, electorally, as in terms of partners, they're one of my weakest partners. As in terms of actually coming out, actually voting, stuff like that, just gonna have to be real with you. But one of, then my next question is gonna get to actually the wrongful incarcerated. And the wrongful incarcerated are some of my best partners as in terms of actually fighting for electoral change. They've been in two institutionalized, they're, uh, been injured, they're fighting the system better. I do see veterans as potentially being a very strong addition to, uh, the numbers are quite high, two hundred fifty thousand is a very significant number. They've been, uh, part of this, and they understand how power can affect them. And it's very possible that veterans as a voting block be extremely, you know, um, strong. So thanks for turning me on to that, yeah.
To the extent of a being, there being a voter block, it's actually my hope, I haven't really talked about this much, chiefly because, you know, campaigning in District Four, I don't really get a chance to talk about specific veteran interests, uh, just because there's not a ton of veterans that live here. But it's my hope in, after getting elected, to create a veteran caucus. Whether or not that's just within the city or expand it to, uh, state officials as well. I really, I really think that there could be and there should be a platform to, especially in New York State to helping veterans run for office.
You know, I'm gonna set that up, actually, uh, we're gonna have a, I've been having discussion panels with like, uh, criminal justice issues. We had actually one of the longest wrongful incarceration in New York State history, Otis Johnson. He had a police officer named John Rickatone, um, uh, being involved in also a guy named Stephen Lee, who's actually called out police corruption. Um, and he, along with candidates, they had a discussion panel. I'm gonna actually reach out to some different veterans organizations, uh, have some candidates like yourself who have actually have some veteran experience and have a discussion specific panel specifically for veterans. And I do see a lot, uh, once again, veterans have already served the country, they're right to serve the country again. We have the list of the voter database, which we're gonna put into your hands to help you run for office and petition and all that. I'm very excited about, um, the things you're talking about. And I think that you'll be, uh, so let's get back to the, um, issues of the, um, the wrongful incarcerated, though, who could be, once again, allies, I put all the people that I'm pointing away, I'll give you the, uh, contact information, people at Fulton Chelsea Houses, public housing tenants, residents that I'm working with, so you can work with individually and with your new, uh, idea for a veterans caucus, which I think is an incredibly powerful political ally. You could root yourself up for the long term. And I'm also very excited to hear the things that you're, I meet candidates, because I've been doing this for a long time, that say they're about an issue, but after the race is over, they kind of disappear, but the things that you're saying kind of show me that you're thinking term, and it implies to me that, you know, yeah, these things can be set up, whether you win or lose. Um, you're you're intent on change for for these particular issues.
Certainly, um, I think the ones that have stuck so far in the race have been um, those veteran issues, you know, the veteran caucus. Uh, certainly, I think being, uh, uh, you know, as time went on, there were more veteran can, you know, there was a handful of more veteran candidates that have been running. But, you know, for the early part of last year, I was the only veteran candidate in all of New York City, running for office. And that kind of put me in a interesting position. Where you know, the the issues of veterans you know, large issue, small issue, kind of came into focus and I, you know, win or lose, you're right, I definitely want to be a part of the team that ends up fixing a lot of these issues.
Appreciate that, yeah.
O- o- one of which, ju- just, you know, I I can talk about it really quickly. There is a uh, veteran board, completely separate from the DVS. Completely separate from city council that basically informs uh, both DVS and the city council on veteran issues, you know, veteran topics. Um, and the VAB is supposed to be filled with thirteen people. Uh, it came out in a committee hearing, uh, two weeks ago that not only do these, you know, certain numbers of these thirteen people never show up to the meetings, but it it's actually been on, there's been one seat unfilled for the last five years. Uh, and the city council is the one that is supposed to appoint people to this board, and they had no idea. Uh, so, you know, something simple like that of, hey, come on, you know, let's, let's fill the board, let's have it be, you know, um, you know, uh, ha- hold an attendance sheet if that's what you need, but, you know, let this advisory board actually do what it's supposed to be doing. You know, uh, fill it, you know, fill that position. You know, i- it's it's one of those things where, like, you build, you know, th- this advisory board was, um, I think I think they've been around for ten years, uh, so twenty fifteen. Uh, so not a a ton of time, but enough time to justifiably have had some effect. And so if you build this cog to help, you know, with the engine and you haven't actually made it work yet, what's the point, you know?
And so, you know, the point is to provide, yeah. Positive die the ability to provide the illusion that they're helping, right, but you could see the priorities and the real, you know, um,
And to a certain, to a certain extent, they do help, it's just
Yeah.
they could be more effective if they were fully staffed.
Yeah, they're not all bad, they're not all good, right? That's that's a great point, so. Just because they have a certain shortage or they weren't looking at one particular thing, doesn't mean they're all bad. That's, I really appreciate that, there's so much
Yeah.
political divisive type of stuff.
One of those things where, you know, it takes somebody who's either been to a committee hearing to hear that or to know that. Yeah, that's like one of those things where, you know, it takes somebody who's either been to a committee hearing to hear that or to know that. Or to be around those people to know, hey, if I don't win, one of the things that I want to tell my uh, the opponent of mine that does win, hey, push for this, cuz, you know, you're gonna get a political win.
You know, I think that's such a mature answer, right? Because it's really not their responsibility if they're not veterans. Right, fight on veterans be interest. So it's a response to the veterans like yourself to step up and realize, right, maybe our voice isn't really being represented to the fullest that it really could be, we're not really taking full advantage. It's really nobody else's really responsibility to take care of veterans. So, I mean, they could be allies once again, right? With um once again, veterans have served us, right? And uh, but we have to work together. Veterans have to assure their own rights. They cannot count on someone else to do it. So I like that.
So, yeah, got kind of going off of that. Um, I mean, we've kind of been touching on it all all morning, but that's really the reason that I'm running, is, you know, there's a difference between an ally and somebody with shared experience, right? You know, uh, Bob Holden, the um chair of the Veteran Veteran Committee, as much of an ally as he is to veterans, at the end of the day, when he goes and talks on the chamber floors in front of the whole city council on veteran issues, he's talking about people that he knows. He's talking about, or he he's representing issues that aren't his or not his friends, you know? Having at least one veteran in the city council, that person, when they speak to the rest of their uh uh, city council members, isn't speaking about someone else. They're speaking from the heart. They're speaking about things that are affecting them if they had not you know, if they they weren't city council members, they're talking about their friends. They're talking about people that are closest to them. And there's a difference with the effort there, you know, if it's, if it's, yeah, you you can still be an ally and not really put in the effort.
Well, there's no pain, there's no urgency. And exactly like you were saying earlier, right, Dom? People that are directly impacted, they need to be a part of the process, right? So with this whole corporate tax idea, or if some of their uh benefits are gonna be taken away, someone who is not being personally affected by those removals benefits
Right.
Um, may not really have, but they'll have other people talking to them, and no one can share all priorities or positions, but that's a solid answer. But as minorities, once again, if veterans only two hundred and fifty uh thousand of of a population of eight point five million, you're gonna need a coalition to get things done. And one of actually the best coalition partners is people who've been wrongly incarcerated. So um, just so you know, um, there's actually a guy named Nolan Farrell, who has a letter from the Conviction Integrity Unit of the Queens District Attorney's Office, that says that the evidence used against him was faulty. Three years ago, we have video evidence of ourselves approaching Melinda Katz, asking for a view of his case. It's three years later, there still has been no review of his case. He still has not been exonerated. Um, we're asking for a view of his case, the case of Otis Johnson, the New York City's longest wrongful incarceration man, and also Reverend Keith Gadsden, one of the longest wrongful incarceration in state history, um, who was freed by the longest-serving state senator in state history, Bill Minetti Montgomery. We're asking for a view of these cases, and if they are found to have been um innocent for compensation uh, for the wrongful incarcerated, um, just, uh, so let's actually break these into just two separate issues. First of all, would you support, right, in the cases for um wrongful incarceration, where there's been some uh evidence, right, of uh their innocence?
Yeah.
Or, right, um, significant support, such as Reverend Keith Gadsden with Bill Minetti Montgomery, uh, supporting his uh, his freedom. Would you support or view of their cases for these wrongful incarcerated individuals?
Certainly.
Okay.
Kind of to go into this, one of the issues um surrounding this is the lack of judges. You know, it's, it's been a, an issue for uh the state assemblyman in my district, Alex Boris, uh, in Albany, to try to get there to be on in the state constitution, more judges in counties uh, so that the court process, the hearing process can be sped up. Because right now, uh, it was actually mentioning mentioning this in his uh uh, State of the Assembly speech last week, that cases are being heard now for the first time that were on the docket in twenty twenty-three. So we're all, you know, you know, for one thing, just leave off reviewing old cases. New cases aren't being heard for at least a year and a half. Uh, so that's one of the biggest issues when it comes to a quick and speedy trial, whether it comes to a quick and speedy uh reexamination of evidence. One of the big issues is that there are just not enough judges.
Let's uh, you know, shout out to Alex Boris, by the way, um, hopefully that uh, you know, he gets to know your campaign, and maybe he'll be supportive. I will see.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, cool. Okay. Uh, like Alex. Okay.
Yeah, he's a great politician, great guy.
Cool, okay. Um, so that was a um, once again, right, um, potentially the wrongful incarcerated are actually some of my best allies.
Yeah.
Um, as you were making electoral things happen. Um, another question that I do have is on the wrongful incarcerated, the second half of that would be compensation for the wrongful incarcerated. Now in Texas, which is um, we know that they actually have very high, you know, they have the death penalty, where they actually, you know, that's not something I support, but, you know, it is what it is, right? Everybody has a different positions and priorities. Uh, but even though Texas will actually kill you, right, um, the thing is they also have the highest exoneration rate. So when they screw up, right, they say, okay, we screwed up and they'll actually free you. They also have actually one of the best compensation, um, you know, laws in the nation with fifty thousand dollars per year of wrongful now personally, I think that number is kind of low. Fifty thousand dollars is really kind of like an entry level job. Going through prison is an extremely harrowing experience, but however, that is still the um, the best compensation law in the nation, in the nation so far. Um, would you support maybe that as a guideline, right? I'm not specific, yeah, specific number, but would you support overall compensation for people that have been proven to be wrongfully incarcerated?
Absolutely. It's uh, it's kind of funny, you know, from a a New Yorker saying, hey, there's a policy in Texas that New York should uh um follow, but uh, it's true. If, you know, Texas is the leading state when it comes to this, that is something to be emulated. Um, you know, nobody should be be incarcerated for something they didn't do, you know, a a
And get no compensation at all, yeah?
Right, a day longer and be absolutely compensated for that.
Shout out to my allies, actually, um, we actually have a national team working on this that are gonna, right, there's some people that are, some people will try to work on a federal level, but there's also a lot of state prisons. There's also city prisons, things like that. I know, I mean, sorry, there's state prisons, but there's city jails, things like that, but there's different levels where people are in different incarceration. So we have to work on this uh legislation in different houses. So um, once again, I do appreciate Vincent Moto, the first man freed on DNA evidence in Philly, Pennsylvania history, has still not received any compensation for his years of incarceration. There's Mutia Jamo Sabru, one of the longest wrongful incarcerated men in U S history with the direct item, Mimi Jamal, Pennsylvania is a very key swing state for I know that we're talking about the city locally, but sometimes by coordinating with other places, we can actually have even national impact by I love your, uh, well, you said this in the introduction, right? You need to be able to affect things locally before you can affect things on a larger scale, right? You have to be able to control your, your region to, right? Okay, so, um, thank you so much for supporting compensation for the wrongful incarcerated. The next question will be, um, and I really love the fact that you talk about authentic representation. Um, right now, uh, I do also work with people with disabilities, shout out to Mark Zaffman, and disabilities are actually the second largest minority group in the nation. So that would be a good, um, you know, population for you to speak to for your campaign.
Also includes veterans.
Yeah, there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of crossover, right? Absolutely, between disabilities and people with the veterans. So the thing, right now, um, there's something called the Helen Keller Institute. We know Helen Keller is actually one of the most famous deaf-blind um advocates, but this organization has never had someone who's deaf-blind actually running the organization. It's kind of like a self-contradictory. Not really gonna bring down, right, this happens, and you also said before, there's no like veterans on board. This happens so much in so many different, you know, cases where authentic representation is not really um engaged. Would you support auth- authentic representation with regards to disabilities advocacy?
Sure.
Yeah.
I but I'm not in a position where I would say, I I I don't think something like that has to be, like, that's I I don't know if that should be a requirement.
That's a good point, yeah. But it's okay for outsiders to be involved, but not all the time. They cannot replace us, but
Like, you know, if if people on, I I don't know how the the organization is structured, but if somebody on the board or people on the board believe in person X, uh and and they're able to get things done, then certainly.
I I know, I actually agree with you. I think that outside perspective is actually valuable. And if there's no outsiders involved, I think that that needs to also be examined, right? If if you can actually have some type of like, uh, you know, corruption can set in or, right, some kind of like a echo chamber can kind of develop. So I really liked your answer. You you kind of alluded to that before, right? You had, nothing about us without us, the people affected must have a voice, which is so often excluded. But, yeah, absolutely, people with other talents, with other perspectives
Yeah.
can make the project stronger, absolutely. So I I agree with that. And by the way, thanks again for your uh supporting authenticity for the people with disabilities. The next question is going, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I I should just kind of uh caveat that by saying, um you know, the, the head of an organization is the face of it, right? So in in the case of the disabled nationally, it certainly, it certainly would make sense that somebody who is uh disabled could or should be the face of it. But in that sort of sense, there could also just be several or, you know, a group of people that are the face of it. Um, the issue when it comes to veterans in New York City is that it's true that, uh, you know, somebody having the outside perspective can have um an interesting take on things. The the issue with New York City is that there's not one veteran. You know, I I'm sure that it would be a different argument with the the disabled community or the the disabled organization, that if the people in charge, the people at the top, none of them were disabled. Which I don't believe is the case, from what you're saying.
Um, well, you know, there's different, there's different issues happening with that, right? There's different complexities, so
Right.
Um, just uh, to mention just one of them, actually, my work is actually focusing on the deaf-blind. Because the communication varies. You'll see a lot of times that when you see disabilities inclusion, you're gonna see someone in a wheelchair, right? And not saying that they're not part of, they definitely are part of the disabilities community, but they don't have the same, right, necessary, like deaf blind often needs Braille, or they need a co- navigator, or they'll need something called CART, where they have like uh, speech to text going on, right? These complications means that certain factions of the disabilities world get more help and attention than other ones, so that, we're not gonna go into that whole rabbit hole, but you know, once again, the authentic representation, um, that's a, that's a such a key element amongst so many uh parts of activism. I'm really glad that um you're really addressing that, because this is actually a singular fight just amongst all of activism itself. So, yeah, the next question is to, um, actually, it's funny that we should mention this, because when myself and Corey Edens were outside of Hunter College with ten thousand pieces of literature, we actually ran into you, right? You were actually wearing uh your sweatshirt, which says, uh, you know, Lucas Flores, Alec Luke Florezak, uh, are those, by the way, uh sweatshirts available on the, it was a great looking sweatshirt. Are those available on the website?
Yeah, there, yeah, um, the sweatshirts, there's a a couple of hats. There's a nice little corduroy one that I, that I really liked.
Merch is available, folks, so um, look, I like this guy, right? Give, I think it's worth it. I'm I'm, we'll see if I can get one, we'll see, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, I I I got a couple free ones for you.
It's getting cold right now, it's a good time to get some hats and stuff.
Yeah, there's uh, uh, there's beanies, there's sweaters, there's uh t-shirts for when it gets warmer out.
I appreciate that, yeah.
I I have a friend, I actually have a friend from Arizona who insisted that the only way that he would donate is if I created a bro tank. Uh, so there's also a uh, uh, a bro tank version of it specifically for him, but it's for everybody. Um, but yeah, let's continue on.
Okay, so the question is that, um, you know, we've been asking all the candidates that we've been interfacing with, uh, if you would support a public meeting with myself and Corey Edens as well as the CUNY Chancellor and the Hunter College President in order to ask certain questions. And we're also trying to maybe get some uh candidates or maybe uh even students involved with this particular project. Would you support a public meeting with uh myself and, right, Corey Edens and the CUNY leadership? Yeah?
Uh, definitely. I think there are, oh, we talked about this when we were uh at Hunter College. There are, to put it mildly, issues with CUNY.
Yeah.
You know, we can get into these issues, we don't have to get into them, whatever uh you'd like, but you know.
Yeah, there's been incidents of of theft of federal monies for research, right, for cocaine parties, things like that.
In a system like CUNY, the issues start at the top.
Yeah.
Um, which is unfortunate. Um, and yeah, I would like to use the power of the office, um, the platform of the office to be able to uh, affect change in the the area of CUNY.
I appreciate that.
In fact, actually, in my district race, District Four, I'm the only CUNY graduate uh to be running. And so the notion of, you know, why does public education on all levels, whether it be kindergarten, high school, higher education, the value of a public education and the value of a uh efficient CUNY system is, I think, integral to making New York City the best it can be. And like, like I said, it starts at the top.
Yeah, and inaccessibility of the top members, we actually have been working for many years, right? And we have this port of many candidates, uh, including even US presidential candidates, asking for a meeting with the chancellor. We just have received no response. We're still following up on this. And uh, you know, the inaccessibility of the top members from actually having to answer certain questions is
I think some of that will take becoming elected of, uh, an elected official. The weight of the office, I think, will matter.
To actually force the conversation, right?
Right.
Thank you so much for your support there. All right, the next question that I have is actually Christopher Leon Johnson, I believe he's the most uh prolific reporter in New York City history, uh, shout out to his work. I asked him what he thought would be a, you know, a good question for the candidates. He actually mentioned e-bikes. You know that there's e-bikes that are lighting on fire. We also know that there's also complaints of e-bikes, uh, you know, occupying large amounts of the sidewalk in front of certain restaurants, uh, people running, pe- running into people, then being used for thefts. There's a lot of issues with e-bikes.
Yeah.
Um, what are your, I I'm not particularly a master of this particular topic, but you know, shout out to Christopher Leon Johnson once again, what are your um ideas or positions regarding e-bike regulations?
So, I've I've briefly mentioned it a couple of times, um that I've developed a fifteen-point plan uh of solutions for running. It's interesting because a couple of these, m- more than one of these points uh, deals with this issue specifically.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah, in District Four, and I'm sure it's across all of New York City. Um, e-bikes tied with public safety are, i- i- it is the biggest issue that people are talking about. My ideas for the solution, or a solution, stem from the fact that, as it stands now, uh, the NYPD cannot do anything about regulation. Uh, yeah, I've talked with several NYPD traffic cops, you know, standing on the street corner uh, about this issue of, you know, I I would present them a hypothetical. You know, we're standing here You know, we're standing here right now. Let's say a, an e-bike going the opposite direction hits somebody in front of us and keeps going. What can you do about it? And every single time, the answer is nothing. Chiefly because, you know, one, the NYPD traffic cop is stationary. You know, you could call it in. You can help the person that was hit.
Right.
But aside from that, there's nothing more to do. And one of my solutions for this is actually getting into a a type of technology. There's already legislation on the books to register the batteries of these e-bikes. Now, the the purpose of this specific legislation, which went into effect uh twenty twenty-three, I believe, was to regulate or or hopefully lower the frequency of battery fires and explosions, which it did, to a certain extent, the 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 bill was effective. However, I believe if you were to amend it, alter the bill just slightly uh to include that all batteries must have a the the technology already exists. I forget exactly what it's called. But a little magnetized IR uh reflector that essentially, you know, uses the energy of the battery uh to emit an IR code or a a series of numbers that can be seen by the CCTV cameras. They don't interfere with pedaling. They don't interfere with, um, you know, bystanders because it's an IR uh an infrared light. You can't see it. Anytime that a bike would uh break traffic law, a camera could see whose battery that belongs to. And be able to find them. I think that's where it starts, being able to actually see who it is that's, uh, you know, breaking these traffic infractions. That's where it starts. Um, the other thing that I think is important, it it's, you know, it's not a silver bullet by any cha- by any means, but two brightened crosswalks at night, you know, too many street corners uh in New York City. You know, when the sun goes down, are pitch black. Um, you know, that affects the people walking across the street, that a that affects the people that are biking normally that can't see, uh, you know, that well in the in the dark. To be able to have streetlights that, you know, lighten the crosswalk at night. I think that too will help collisions. But, you know, going back to the my first policy, I think that really is the the first stepping stone in being able to really uh stem this issue. To be able to see and tell right off the bat, person XYZ. You know, we we have the camera.
That makes sense, yeah. Accountability, right, is key. Um, you know, and I like the fact that there's an actual methodology, right, in place to actually uh execute this particular plan, right, versus uh, everybody should do blah, blah, blah. That's just not going to be enough, so.
Uh, you know, sort of, you know, one of the things that kind of inspired this was I was hearing that uh one of the reasons why there are not license plates already for bikes is the bicycling lobby insisted that putting license plates on bikes and e-bikes interferes with the act of pedaling. Now, I I have no opinion on that argument, one way or the other. But my thought was, okay, well, if that's the case, how do you get around that? Well, reflectors don't interfere with pedaling because reflectors are on bikes anyway.
Right.
And there are already reflectors that can emit things. Just have them emit. Uh, you know, originally, I was thinking you could have them emit a QR code, but, you know, it could be more simple than that and just have it reflect a series of numbers like a license plate.
Yeah. That's a good point, yeah. Okay, so, um, there's other, I think that's a pretty solid solution, right? I could see uh people can try to get around it, but you know, it's uh, it's one of the better solutions I've actually heard, so I really appreciate, um, you know, that.
Yeah, no, I kind of also stemming from that, I realized that a lot of candidates run on issues. And one of the things that I would like to try to separate myself in doing is run on solutions. I like. Everybody can talk about the issues. Everybody knows that e-bikes and public safety is the number one issue that people are running on this election. But not many candidates actually have solutions for these issues. And so I would, you know, I would rather run on solutions than issues.
Cool, all right. Um, just uh, my next question is regarding, uh, I have other allies. I know it's not, once again, it's not in your district. Uh, I I'm not, I don't think even the Asian American population is necessarily so large.
No, but, yeah, on that issue, actually, the Asian American Society Museum is in my district.
Oh, interesting, cool, okay. So the thing is that right now, um, the largest mobilization of Asian Americans in New York City history and the longest one is actually happening in Brooklyn's Chinatown right now in their fight to prevent the building of a homeless shelter in their community. Now, right now, we know that, um, Manhattan Chinatown has eight shelters and also they're trying to build a mega jail there. I know that Harlem actually has, I think about one point four percent of the uh New York City population, somewhere around there. And they have ten percent of all the adult uh homeless shelters in the city. Would you support Brooklyn Chinatown? Uh, they're trying to fight the building of homeless shelter in the community. And I don't think that there's actually so many homeless shelters in um the Brooklyn Chinatown one, but they see what happened in Manhattan. They're very concerned. Also, the proposed um shelter is being planned to be built uh right next to, I believe, a daycare center and grocery store, which I think that they're very concerned about.
I would imagine that's where the the biggest criticism comes from.
Absolutely, yeah, but there's a, there's, you know, there's a couple of different uh potential solutions such as, um, you know, maybe a shelter that specifically only takes care of people from that community, right? There, I think also they're unhappy about people from outside the community being shipped into there to be taken care of the homeless shelters. But uh as terms of, uh, would you be willing to support, or or you know, or I think there's a recently bill got passed by Susan Juang. She's the city council member for that, for uh that part of uh Brooklyn, which says that now there has to be more community input as in terms of uh before putting homeless shelters into the community. So would would you support Brooklyn Chinatown, their fight to prevent the building of the homeless shelter in the community? Maybe you gotta add some things to that, but what's your position on that? Go ahead.
So because it's not in my district, I don't know a ton about it, so uh I reserve myself to having a solid opinion one way or the other. I am in favor of the city councilman. The way you phrased it, I I liked, um, putting a a voice back into the community. Community should have a say in what goes in their neighborhood. You know, their their back door or the backyard. I'm for having a homeless shelter. But, you know, the location of which is, I think, irrelevant. You know, if it's, I I understand if it's next to a daycare center that that causes a lot of issues. Which I wouldn't be for. I, I would support the community. If if the community has the support of the city councilwoman and the city councilwoman's on board with having it not come to fruition, then I don't see any reason why I would be against that.
I I appreciate your support for the community, yeah? It's it's a complex one, so we will probably, um. Actually, this next question is kind of like, uh, we get to dive into some of the real problem solving stuff, so this is actually a hypothetical question. And uh another uh community that I actually consider myself to be um friendly towards is the trans community. I know they're under a lot of fire right now. That's quite regrettable. It is what it is. Um, but uh, you know, the thing is that in this hypothetical question, let's suppose that we have the uh issue of public housing. We know that the um trans people face a lot of discrimination on the job. They face discrimination in housing. And they may find themselves needing public housing. Makes sense, right? So the thing is that, um, let's say that ten percent of the people applying for public housing are trans. But then we do a study and we see that only one percent of the people in public housing are trans. So we look at this uh this discrepancy and we say, we we go into the trans people and we say, you know what, why do you think this is happening? And they say, we're getting beat up, we're getting discriminated against, right? People are, you know, leaving us nasty messages. So some of us are leaving by our own court. Some of us are actually, uh, you know, um, but fighting to stay, right? There's there's all kinds of things going on, but we know there's no law saying that you can discriminate against trans people. But this is still happening anyways. What can you do to protect fair access for people who are, um, you know, whether you give the lifestyle or not, right? How will you actually protect me, ensure them fair access to government resources?
So so a a lot of this issue comes down to perception, right? To become normalized is perhaps one of the hardest, you know, civic things to do. It starts with, you know, and when it comes to public safety, it starts with being able to trust the police force in the local area. And I think that would be the best way to either start an investigation or start by insisting fair practices. You know, i- if, you know, being able to be communicating with both parties, the the local police force and the local uh LGDB, LGD, LGBTQ plus activists or or organizational leaders in that area about, hey, if something is wrong, here are the people in the NYPD that you can trust to report these things. The other aspect when it comes to public housing is looking into the organizations that oversee public housing. Are they being discriminatory? If that's the case, you know, i- is it as simple as, you know, changing authority, or you know, removal and in stating, uh, putting in someone else, or is it a matter of, you know, let's talk more about this. Let's see what the issue is. You know, I'm I'm sure a lot of excuses will be thrown around, but at the end of the day, if the statistics don't match, then generally speaking, then there's something wrong. So I think that, yeah, the the going back, the first thing I would do is set up a line of communication between activists in the area and those that oversee public safety. If if the issue, or if one of the issues is uh crime is not being reported.
Okay.
Um, and I think one of the responsibilities of an elected official's office is to be that conduit uh of communication between one party and a government agency. You know, going back to one of my fifteen points. One of the things that I intend to do is, you know, there, you may know this. Uh, the Build-A-Block meetings, every precinct in New York City hosts monthly uh community outreach meetings where they go over the crime statistics of the precinct month to month. You know, I've been to, I would say, three dozen of these meetings over the course of the campaign. And I would say the most number of people I've ever seen at any one meeting was maybe fifteen people. Which, if these are public free events to go to and, you know, people are understandably concerned with public safety, wouldn't you want to know what's going on in your precinct? And so I I think it should be the responsibility of the city councilman of the precinct of the district to relay that information uh to a wider audience. You know, have it up on, you know, the the city council website. Talk about it, you know, use social media. Those sorts of things. And so if I can do that for the LGBTQ plus community when it comes to public safety and when it comes to um housing discrimination, that too is a a requirement, I I think a requirement of the office.
Okay, one of the questions that, um, you know, hidden in the question, there's some uh ideas about like, you know, before I said ten percent, one percent, and I said the numbers were off. You talked about the discrepancy, right? So the thing is that, um, do you try to pull the one percent up to the ten percent and then it wants to reach a ten percent, do you level it off? I didn't use the numbers to really make your decisions. Uh, why do you incorporate that? Yeah, go ahead.
It's not necessarily about making the numbers match. It's about using the numbers to see that something is wrong. The, you know, using statistics or accurate statistics. It is, it's a, it's a it's hard to do, for one, but it's a talent.
Just so you know, um, I've asked over, um, you know, I believe a hu- maybe almost a hundred candidates at this time, like this exact question. And almost none of them want quotas, so your answer is actually lining up with many other candidates. Yeah, so just so you know, yeah, you're in shared company. Don't feel like you're all alone in what you're saying, right? This is.
No, um. It it's it's using statistics to see that something is wrong. You don't use numbers and you, you know, you don't want to balance it out necessarily and make ten percent mean ten percent. It's that if ten percent of the population is, I don't know, dying of the flu, but only one percent are going to hospitals, then something's wrong. And it's not making sure that ten percent of all occupants in hospitals are, have the flu. It's that something is wrong. And you you won't know that something is i- is corrected when it means, you know, when it equals ten percent and ten percent. But you'd be able to tell a difference uh visually and statistically if the numbers move. You know, positively or negatively, going back to a discriminated community, you'd be able to know whether or not what you're doing is improving the situation or not. And we're always looking for improvement. I I I don't think any public official will ever, you know, perfect an idea or perfect a a solution or policy. You know, uh, we're always trying to make things better, but there's always going to be issues, unfortunately. But that's just because humans are humans. And the best that we can do is, you know, try to be honorable, try to be moral and try to do the right thing. And i- if we get a situation to resolve, then we've done a good thing. Uh, you know. It, yeah, it's it's not about making the. It, yeah, it's it's not about making the numbers match. It's about doing. The the ethical thing.
Okay, um, so those are the questions for my um, for my political allies. Thanks. I know it's quite a list, but uh, you know, the more. The more allies that collect, the more chances I have to really uh build the coalition that can get its issues resolved.
No, I I like answering all the, all the questions.
Thank you. Now.
Even the tough ones.
Thank you, yeah. There's some other issues that are, um, you know, that may, that you may have particular specialization in, or you want to bring to the uh. To the campaign. Once again, thanks for addressing the issues of my coalition. Are there any issues that you want to bring to the table or that um?
Not necessarily. I think we've pretty much covered all the issues that I'm running on. I, oh, actually, I will point out. One thing that I didn't mention. That's a part of my. Uh, a couple of things that are a part of my fifteen points that we didn't get to mention.
Let's talk about those fifteen points right now, actually. Are they listed on your website?
No, so actually, uh, not yet, I I should say. Um, I'm in the process of. Uh, creating some pretty. Really good content for social media and it's gonna go out, uh, you know, to the media and stuff like that. Be like little fifteen second commercials and.
Hey, maybe I could, I don't know if you already have one for that, right? But uh, I also do a lot of video work. Maybe we could work together. I don't know. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. O- once all of the editing is finished, so I've I've uh recorded most of it. Once all the editing is finished, it's all gonna go out as one. Um, you know, I don't want to have it be coming out on my webpage and then, you know, a week later comes out on something else. I want it to be just. All bam. But so I I can list, I can uh read off. Uh, the fifteen points if you'd like.
Go ahead.
One is to document each of the district's precinct community outreach meetings to monitor crime trends as they occur. So like we were saying before. Essentially relay the Build-A-Block meetings. And have an outlet on. My website, whether or not, you know, it's my personal website or um, this, the official city council website. Um, to kind of update those month to month. Two is to issue bimonthly statements detailing these trends. So every other month. Update these. Including what the precinct officers see is the best course of action. So. You know. It's one thing to be an open communicator and, you know, and say, hey, this is what's happening. It's another thing to, you know, sit down with those that are in the trenches, so to say, uh. So to speak and. See what they think should be done about X, Y, and Z. You know, if there are. There's an uptick in burglaries in a certain area. What are the people on the ground who have to deal with these things? What do they think should be done about it? And then relay that to the community. You know, it's it's a community engagement. You know, it should be a conversation with all. Three is to stay up to date with the county sheriff office. With the work being done to dismantle illegal cannabis shops, uh, to keep constituents informed. Um, one of the biggest issues last year. When it came to public safety and uh, these shops, especially in District Four. There's a lot of constituents that are unhappy with the progress of work being done. With closing down the illegal shops. The issue was originally. The jurisdiction fell to the sheriff's department. Which the county sheriff has a, you know, two hundred people in the in the department. Compared with almost forty thousand NYPD officers. You know, i- it took a lot of work to close down one shop, let alone the almost seven thousand that are in Manhattan. So it wasn't until May that the sheriff actually had the. Uh, the green light to use NYPD manpower. And slowly but surely, uh, certain shops of the the illegal ones have been closing more regularly. But still, a lot of people don't know the process. They don't know, you know, what's going on. They might see a store pop up and it's up for several months before it closes. And think, well, you know, what's the NYPD doing? You know, what what are they? You know, they're not doing their job. And kind of to reinforce that understanding of, you know, how the system works. Um, you know, like I was saying earlier, bring up the level of understanding of the community. Four is to address traffic law, um, regulating regarding e-bikes. Uh, develop solutions to brighten crosswalks at night. So this is going back to what we were talking about with the um. Yeah, the IR reflectors. Five is the one that we haven't really had a chance to talk to uh, to touch on. Empower religious tolerance by talking about the sensitive it, sensitive issues. Acceptance comes from knowledge. So one of the things that I would like to do is. Be an advocate for all sorts of religions. To to learn about them, to be able to talk eloquently and uh intelligently. About different cultures and different religions. You know, one of the issues we've seen over the last year is that. One group doesn't want to or doesn't understand the other group. And in the most diverse city in America and the most diverse city in the world. We shouldn't be having groups of people. Unwilling to understand the other. Uh, and. You know. It can come from. Community engagement, but it also has to be. Addressed at the governmental level. To have it be, you know, and uh, whether or not it's an official policy or or just, you know, effort done by. Elected representatives. It says a lot when an elected representative. Is at an event, is is willing to listen. And you know, what what does that mean when somebody who's been sworn in to office is willing to listen to both sides? And I I I I really think that that. You know, like it says, like, like I wrote at the, the end, acceptance does come from knowledge. Being able to talk eloquently on both sides. Six is to explore efficient ways to invest in public schools. Yeah, I could go into. Plenty of different ways that I think this could happen.
Schools are the number one, uh, that's the largest budget expenditure for the city. So that's actually quite an important topic.
Yeah, and. You know, I I I take the opinion of uh. If anybody knows Sam Seaborn. Uh, a character from the West Wing that. Public schools should be palaces. They should be. A lot more, to put it shortly and simply, than what they are now. Places of safety, places of pride in the community. Some of that takes funding, some of that takes. Personal effort. You know, it's not something that'll be done overnight, but. I think it's something that needs to be done. Uh, seven is host periodic events to promote learning, uh, featuring guest lectures on all subjects. So kind of like I was envisioning like TED Talks almost, but.
A public speaker series? That makes sense. Okay.
Yeah, basically. And and there are already organizations that do this. Um, around the city. And, you know, I could feasibly piggyback off of them or or. Just using the platform of the office. You know, engage with those.
Maybe you could even do those during a campaign. Maybe we could even start to kick off. Just being a, just being a candidate running for office gives you certain access and can uh make us impact uh. Some of the things, that's actually what we're doing right now. So that would be. Maybe part of that. I I'm excited. Thank you. I I tell you the truth, I really um, like a lot of things that you, I I really. Appreciate this interview. I think that uh. I've had interviews with overall, you know, met so many candidates, but I really think that you were very. I could tell that you've given these ideas like quite a bit of thought. I think you're pretty intelligent. I think you're very intelligent. I think that uh, it really stands out in the way that you're approaching the answer. So. Keep going on, but uh, as in terms of uh, I do think you're you're special as a candidate and I do uh.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm looking to working forward with you on a longer term basis, but keep going on, yeah.
Uh, so we're halfway through. Eight is to work with teachers unions and the administrations in crafting a meaningful and long lasting contract. Um, I think. One of the, one of the speed bumps when it comes to. Empowering public education, any even even private education is. Teacher, you know, teachers don't necessarily feel the pride that they could be feeling. Working at a public school. And I think, you know, somebody in city council, somebody in local government needs to help with that. And one of the issues for that is the constant. Uh, debate with contracts. I'm sure you you know what I'm talking about, the the most recent strike and the uh. Uh, teachers union holdout for the most recent CUNY contract. You know, something like that shouldn't happen ever. Um, you know, going back to that, schools should be palaces. Teachers should be. You know, it 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 should be the best job in the world.
Well, I have my own thoughts on that. I'm not gonna insert those right now, right? Because we're actually, uh, this is really about you, not about me, right? That this this interview, but. I we'll we'll talk about this like later, yeah, but.
Yeah.
I have my own different thoughts.
And and you know, when it comes to these points. Uh, like I was saying, you know, it's written sort of as a first hundred days. Sort of quote unquote, you know, things that I would like to emphasize. As a representative. Um, but there's certainly room for discussion and debate. You know, there's. I, you know, none of these.
You've always been very accessible and open. I really appreciate that, but let's go, let's keep running down the stuff, right? So you you want the contracts and that makes sense. They're a powerful political entity. And um, hopefully they watch this and they realize that you're a supporter of their efforts. Right? There's actually quite a few faculty. A lot of the students don't really live right in that district, but there are quite a few professors and faculty who do. And this could be relevant. So it's good for them to know that you're an ally on this particular topic.
And, you know, not only that, like we were talking about when we first met, Hunter College, um, there are parts of Baruch. And the city graduate program are all within District Four. Um, yeah, so it's, you know, having happy teachers and happy administrators. In a well functioning CUNY is an important thing for me. Um, but keep, keep going. Uh, nine is reverse policies that mandate. Uh, Manhattan students from attending outside school districts. So. Essentially, uh, reforming the SHSAT. I think, um. Uh, standardized testing should still exist, but it shouldn't be the deciding factor on where children are going to school. Yeah, there's, there's plenty of complaints, especially in District of. Students are, two out of every three Manhattan high school kids. Goes to a high school outside of the borough. And, you know, all of what that means, hours on public, you know, necessarily unsafe public transportation. You know, um, making the subways and buses safer is a completely different issue. But like that shouldn't, you know, if if you live within walking distance of a high school, you should generally speaking, be able to go to that high school. And the fact that it's, you know, a a a process and paperwork and a headache. To have that be the case is unacceptable. The alternative too. Uh, is to also put the emphasis and effort into just making all. Uh, public high schools and and public schools the best they can be. You know, instead of making certain schools the best. Try to make all schools the best. Uh, you know, and that goes back to, you know, every, every public school institution should be the point of pride of the community. Not just certain specific ones.
Makes sense.
You know, I'm I'm sure you have thoughts on that too. But moving on, ten is to craft policies and pilot projects for supporting homeownership. Uh, so one of the things, one of the issues of uh, my generation and younger generations is that. The idea of owning a home. Is. Becoming more and more a fantasy. And, uh, you know, I I. I can go into it if you want, but I had a, an idea for a pilot project that essentially would assist. In. Helping with the down payment of a, uh, owning a home. The 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 behind the scenes working workings of the pilot project are a little convoluted.
This is extremely interesting to me. Um, have you heard, by the way, quick question. I I don't expect to know everything. I find you very knowledgeable, though. Um, have you heard of something called RMCs, Resident Management Councils or corporations? That's okay. We'll get into that later. That's actually an interesting, um, I love what you're saying right there. That's actually to give. Once again, residents, sometimes even in public housing, a chance for homeownership.
Right.
Things like that. So um, maybe that could actually tie in. Uh, but yeah, keep going on. Uh, I do like this idea a lot. Uh, homeownership is actually one of the ways that a lot of people find a way to really build wealth or.
That's gonna be another point coming down.
Great, okay, so I like it a lot. Keep going, yeah.
Um, number twelve or number eleven is develop outside the box. Solutions for low income families investing in themselves. So exactly that point, you know, um, being able to own property. For many low income or um, median household income, uh, families. Is the best way to grow wealth. And if it's becoming less and less likely that younger generations are not gonna be able to own property. Then that idea of the wealth gap is just gonna continue to expand, uh, expand. And. Hopefully I can do something to either help stop that or help um mitigate that.
I definitely appreciate that, yeah.
Uh, twelve is oversee city of yes implementation. Um, you know, it's one thing that the city council got that bill passed. And having it be enacted now, it's gonna be on the next generation of city councillors to. Oversee what uh, projects are being done. So that's gonna be on me. It's gonna be on. You know, all of the new city councillors in the next several terms. Thirteen, support the efforts of the Department of Veteran Services. Including homelessness, affordable housing, medical access, educational and occupational support. You know, we've covered this. Certainly throughout the interview. Anything that I can do to help that community is a requirement of the office. Uh, fourteen, host Chopin style uh, quarterly salons, like we were talking about, kind of emphasizing local art. Um, featuring local artists, musicians um, and authors. Uh, I think we briefly went into this earlier.
Just had a quick question, right? Uh, you did explain what a salon is. What's a Chopin style salon?
So it's essentially the same thing. I, I could be wrong in my history, but I, I believe Chopin was the one that started. No, Chopin was a composer and pianist uh, in Paris during the uh, early eighteen hundreds. And at the time, salons had been chiefly for art. Well, he took it a step further and developed it into a musical salon. Uh, and that idea of having it be multi-genreed, you know, having it be both music, painting, statues, literature, poetry, wha- what have you. That's the terminology that, that's what I'm going for. So that it's not just, you know, one specific kind of um, creative outlet, but all sorts of uh, creative outlets. That's the, the goal, essentially. That's why, you know, Chopin style salons might not be the proper term. But in my head of how, you know, um, how they developed, that's what I've, I've got.
Interesting.
And then fifteen, using the platform of city council, promote local artists, musicians and authors by attending these events. Again, use the platform of the office to celebrate the arts in the district and around the city.
Cool. Um, I don't know if, uh, by the way, does that, does your District Four include like eighty-sixth Street and ninety-fifth Street on the Q train?
On the Q, no, just barely.
Okay.
It eighty-sixth to, from uh, from Fifth Avenue to uh, Third Avenue is my district. And then anywhere east to the East River is going to be District Five.
You know, I don't know if you, you, you know, a guy named Eyeglasses Strings?
Sounds very familiar.
He's actually a cellist that actually was hit on the head with a metal bottle. Right? Uh, he was playing, I think, uh, over at um, I think thirty-fourth Street, First Second Street when that happened, but he also regularly plays at eighty-sixth Street on that, um, on the Q line. There's some other people I know like Going Local Duo. There's this Mary Hanley. These are other, uh, you know, um, artists that play on that line. I think some of them even play piano and they might be willing to wear your shirt, right? I think thousands of people see them every day. Um, I'll put you in contact with them. And uh, they're, they're, they may be close enough to where your district is to help you publicize your campaign. I think you're very cool. I really, um, I'm a fan. Key, I'm, I'm sorry, keep going on, but uh,
No, that, that was off fifteen.
Yeah, and they would benefit from that salon right there. You know, I mean, they would really, um, yeah, so they could even make possibly headliners, right? The guy named Brian, Brian Brahms is, is incredible. I'll shoot you some of the videos afterwards. Go ahead.
No, yeah, but those are all fifteen.
All right, cool. Yeah. So look, um, I think you're an incredible, um, you know, this has been a lo- longer than most, most of the, um, yeah, I know for one hour. Yeah, this one has gone, but you know, you have more to say and you have actually, uh, your, your stuff was quite well thought out. Um, right now is the time when I ask about um, how people can find out more about your campaign. Uh, let me see if it's showing the URL right there. It's Luke Floresak dot NYC.
Floresak uh, for NYC. Uh, four is the number.
Unfortunately, it doesn't show the URL right there, but let me see if it, it's just, uh, yeah, you could see down, uh, Luke Floresak, let me see, where's the address? Dot NYC and you could just see the spelling of his name right there. It's also on his thing, right? No spaces. Just Luke Floresak dot NYC. Um, also, go ahead.
I've been told it's a hard name to pronounce, but uh, if you just imagine it without the C, just sound it out.
Sounds good. Yeah. There's some information about him, a little further down the thing. Um, by the way, which, uh, I see you have Instagram up. And your email's there. That's cool. Appreciate it. Um, so really that's the place where you really do your, um, your social media. You really post primarily.
Yeah, uh, their threads, um, I think the Instagram is linked to the, my Facebook. Um, I try to stay away from Twitter and uh, TikTok. Uh, when TikTok was getting big in the US, I was in the Marines and there was actually a, a memo that came out that uh, basically instructed us to never download it onto a, our phone.
Why? Is that for security reasons?
Y- yeah.
Wow, okay.
No, uh, TikTok.
Oh, TikTok. Okay, yeah.
Um, this was back in like twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen and um, yeah, we were, there was a, a, an official memo by the DOD that, or to the Marine Corps at least. Explicitly saying that we shouldn't download it onto our phones for security reasons. And uh, so I've just never had a TikTok.
Yeah, if, if the Chinese have like the information on, right? Where all the people of the armed forces are and at all times on their cell phones and they can track where these people are.
Yeah, exactly.
Faces and other things. I mean, that's, that's a security risk. But um, you know, yeah.
I know it will probably be more lucrative uh, to have TikTok with Instagram. But um,
Yeah, I, I must self didn't sign up for TikTok either, but it was like a, for a slightly different reason. Um, you know, that was part of the equation, right? Looking at that issue, but also the fact of the matter, it was just too much for me to update all the different platforms. You know, there was Twitter, there was MeWe, there was Gab, there's Rumble, there's YouTube. I just couldn't keep, keep up with all of them. So I just ended up paring it down, but because you're a candidate, you're going to want to be able to shoot wide. Maybe, um, you know, we'll see if, I think you're very cool. Maybe there's space for uh, someone to work on your campaign, maybe a social media manager.
Yeah, certainly.
Maybe, we'll see. Yeah.
I know, um, yeah, when my content comes out with the fifteen points, I'm going to be adding a uh, YouTube account.
But the real key, once again, right? Um, the algorithm could decide who gets looked at, stuff like that. Really want to make your base to Luke Floresak dot NYC. That's the key, right? Um, and everything will be posted up there and after social media gets added, he'll add it there to his own website. So, yeah. Um, now that people have your information and uh, by the way, I am once again, uh, I've interviewed many candidates. You're actually one of my, I, I have a very good feeling about you actually, um, and this is within not just this race, but actually out of all the candidates, I've, I've held the only twenty-one um, New York City um, independent third party candidate forums and debates. I interviewed candidates from both parties for that cycle. And uh, you've actually one of my, not just because of the length of time that went on, but the way that you thought about the questions, I'm really a big fan. So what can people, um, you want, you almost have my endorsement, just so you know, I gotta find out more about the other candidates running, but really you stood out a lot, not just in this cycle, but you know, amongst all the candidates I've interviewed. How can people, do you have any upcoming events? You got any fundraisers? Are you going to be a?
I had, actually had a fundraiser on Tuesday, uh, this past Tuesday. So it, it was kind of geared to be a little smaller. The point of it was to get kind of the leaders of various aspects of New York City together that might not necessarily come in contact with each other. Like for example, I had um, uh, the president of a construction company. A talent agent from Hollywood come in, um, he lives in, in District.
Making me feel bad because I missed it. Oh my God, it sounds very cool. Yeah, but
I had like a playwright come, uh, there was a, a business owner who runs a comedy show. He's actually a, um, a veteran.
How did I miss this? Oh my God. Keep going. Yeah.
But having like all of these leaders in the, their, you know, little worlds come together and who might not normally ever meet. You know, so there was about twelve, fourteen people there. But it was a great event and uh, I would like to have more of those sort of um, interactions. But you know, coming off of having that event, we're, we're uh,
Let's, let's talk about the future though, right? That sounds like an awesome event. Um, but you know, now that people have your information, they want to know what they have to look forward to. You got, um, what, what, what do you got coming up?
Uh, nothing as of yet in February, but that's going to be changing uh, in the next five days, I'd say.
There's some mail forums coming up. I'm going to shoot those to you, right? Maybe actually, uh, when you're running for city council, you could pair up with a mayor candidate. And then when you get your petition signed, get the sign for them as well. This network can help you.
Already in the process of that.
Oh, there we go, right? So, oh, well, well, can I get a, which mayor candidate? Do you know, have you decided which one you're going to work with or?
Um, I've talked with a couple.
Okay. And can you say the names?
Not yet, just because we, we haven't closed the, the deal yet.
Hey, look, I'm trying to get access to some of the higher level Merrill candidates, right? I guess like, you know, Brad Landers, uh, what's his name? Jessica Ramos. Um, you know, Zoran, right? That they're not really talking to me yet. Maybe through you they would. Um, we'll see. Yeah. Possibly, we'll see.
Yeah, um, it's always good to get out the effort and uh, and try. I know, um, I, I haven't talked with uh, Brad Landers yet, but um, Jessica Ramos, we've had
Oh, yeah. Okay.
She's a great activist. Certainly a, a, a real decent option for mayor.
Head of Labor Committee, stuff like that, right?
Yeah.
Um, I, I do like her a lot. Um, just so you know, uh, you know, no one's perfect, but she also, just so you know, I think as for the fundraising, she's kind of like one of the lower ones, but she's also one of the, even though it's lower, she does have, uh, she's, I think, head of labor for the state senate and she, she has significant political backing and she's, she's, she's pretty skillful when I meet her in person. So, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but there's other candidates as well too. Scott Stringer, I think is in the lead right now with the money situation. Maybe even we could talk about it off camera and like, you know, I'll be like, what I think and you know, we'll uh, I'm a big fan of this guy. So if you have Luke Floresak on your team, if you're a Merrill candidate, um, that's going to be really helpful for getting closer to me and my coalition. Um, I, I know that's probably a concern, so I like this guy, just saying that, yeah. Uh, so, well, um, you may be showing up for the mail forums, maybe not, but you know, I also have other plans coming up, but it's going to be busy, exactly one week, there's a lot of these things are dropping. So yeah, stay tuned to the website and uh, I guess on the Instagram, maybe you'll, you'll post up too, but the website.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Do you have a mailing list or anything like that?
Uh, yeah, so it's on the, on the
On the website?
On the website. If you just, you know, send in the information every time that I send out uh, mailing.
Definitely sign up, folks. This is, this is a guy to watch. Yeah, I'm going to be watching. I'm going to be staying in contact. All right. Um, I think that's pretty much the interview. Anything last thing that you want to mention? Anything else?
Uh, no, I hope everybody has a great weekend um, and is looking forward to the primary.
Thank you so much. Yeah, it's to stay on too, because I want to talk to a couple of things before, uh, I know it was a long time, but let me just end this stream here. We're going to talk a little bit of our own business.